...ten, two thousand nineteen work session, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. I don't have any announcements. So, tonight we have three items for discussion. Our first one is a discussion with the EPA and the Duchess County Department of Health regarding Hopewell North Water District. Usually for work sessions, we don't allow comments from residents, but tonight I have the podium here, residents, to come up and address us, the board, and our guests. Tonight, we have Lorenzo Thantoux from the EPA, Marie Brulay, and Lee Felsham from the Duchess County Department of Health. Thank you all for joining us, I very much appreciate it. So, just a few comments about this. I've been fielding a lot of calls, the town board's been fielding a lot of calls, from residents in the new Hopewell North Water District. Currently, as everybody knows, the town is working on finishing the water filtration building with the new wells that we dug across the street from town hall here. When we started this project, we weren't absolutely sure if our timeline was going to coincide with the EPA's. Fortunately for the EPA, they were fully funded. We fought hard for that, and they had all their engineering and everything in place when they came to us, when we were looking for the water source. So, we were a little bit behind the eight ball. We are like three to four months behind, but we did put provisions in place to have water for them, and one of the water sources was going to be from Duchess County. And that is going to be on a temporary basis. Originally, we were only going to use the Duchess County water line for flushing of the hydrants. So, now we will use that as they start hooking people up until our filter building is finished come April, and we will go live with our Cannon wellfields. This should be about April, which I said, we're hopeful that it could be earlier, but as time progresses, project moves forward, there's been a lot of obstacles, good and bad, but we are hopeful for April. Now, tonight I have everybody here to have a full discussion. A lot of residents have concerns that the water from Duchess County is not safe. I can assure you that is completely false. The water is completely safe from Duchess County. I have representatives here to discuss this. Duchess County, their facility was upgraded in two thousand sixteen with an addition of ozone biological filtration and larger centrifuges at a cost of eighteen point two million dollars. This project significantly reduced the disinfection byproduct in the treated water. And also, right now, they're currently replacing the UV disinfection system at a cost of four point six million. That is a current project that they are doing. I would like to open it up. Scott, would you like to do a little presentation first about what the timeline, or do we want to go to some questions and answers?
I'll start with the questions and answers.
Okay, I think that's best too. So, why don't we have residents who have any questions or concerns to please come up to the podium to ask the questions to our guests and to the town board?
They sent some questions to us because this was the last minute where you allowed the residents to talk.
Okay, so if you'd like to, you want to field some? Yeah, absolutely. Oh, the councilman has some of your questions, he'll address them first?
Okay, that's great.
Sounds good.
Thank you guys for coming, we really appreciate it. One of the concerns, just to start off, there seems to be an issue with communication. And if you could shed a little light on that, because we have some residents that are claiming that they have not received any letters indicating of any meetings, particularly in contaminated sites. They say that for two letters in a row, I believe, that were sent out, there's no letters that they received. So, how can we sort of increase the communication a little bit better with the residents?
Yeah, we did get a call from Deborah back in early May. That was for our May fourteenth public availability session that we had to give an update to the community about the upcoming service connections to about three hundred homes. And we were really surprised when Deborah called to tell me and my community relations person, Cecilia Ackles, that she never got the letter. What we typically do is, we have a working Hopewell master mailing list. As of now, we have about well over three hundred homes. So, every time we have a public meeting, formal public meeting or availability session, we send like a fact sheet, or in this case, a small postcard, explaining when we are going to be having this meeting and what we are going to be discussing. And Deborah told me and Cecilia that she did not get it. So, Cecilia emailed it to Deborah, and also postcard to Deborah and other residents in her neighborhood who Deborah said did not get. And then we followed up on that with a call to Deborah. And Deborah, I think he finally told Cecilia that you did get it, and that was before the public meeting. And also, supervisor, you know that we shared that postcard with you?
Yes.
And that was posted on your website?
Yes.
So, that was another way of informing the community of this upcoming public meeting. And then, you know, we found out after the public meeting that Deborah wasn't feeling that well on the day of the meeting, so she did not make it. So, that's the process that we've always gone through. And if I may say so, oftentimes, you know, we have gone these calls from people, some of them actually admitted to us that, smaller than a postcard, it's very easy for it to be buried with other mail that might have resulted in their overlooking. Because we often go through that, because at Hopewell site, we do annual private well sampling every year around September. We do like close to a hundred homes, and oftentimes, we get calls back, calls from like people, when we try to call them, they say they never got it, so we would send another postcard to them. So, that can happen too. But in the case with Deborah, all I can say is, the process that we went through did not deviate from the same process that we have used for other public meetings that we have had in the past. But nonetheless, you know, we acknowledge that Deborah did not get it, and we are trying to look at ways to improve, so this doesn't happen again.
Well, I don't want to single out one resident, but I do know that other residents had not received any information as well.
Right, I heard that from Deborah. So, we just don't understand how that could have happened, short of like, you know, doing the next step to send out, you know, return receipt, you know, request it.
I just want you guys to understand that it's from our perspective, and certainly from their perspective, and understand why they're upset about it.
Right, I totally understand.
Because they're the ones who have had to live through all this.
I said that to Deborah, you know, we just apologized, and we sent an email to Deborah, and Deborah and other people, we sent the same postcard in the mail, and then we follow up on that with a phone call, and at least with Deborah. Deborah, I think you got it, right?
Yeah, but I need to say the timeline of everything, so that everybody knows what really happened, okay? The first year that I did not get the letter, Nancy didn't get the letter, other people didn't get the letter. I was trying to get the EPA, I was even trying to get the town to help me contact the EPA because I wasn't getting anywhere, we weren't getting any letters. Nobody was going to send them out. I didn't know everybody who didn't get it, but I know it was quite a bit on Lenart and other streets, and I don't talk to everybody. So, it took contacting Marcus Malinaro on a Friday night on the computer and asking if he can help. He happened that year to have known the person who was in charge of Region Two EPA, and he contacted him. And by eleven o'clock, I was told that he contacted him, so thank you, Mark. And right about that time, Cecilia, who was supposed to be in charge of letters, came back from Puerto Rico, working there. So, obviously, somebody else sent out the letters. But if it hadn't been for Mark, nobody in my area would have gotten a letter that first year. The second year, I couldn't have imagined that the same thing would have happened. The same people did not get a letter this year, for this last meeting that just passed. And just because something gets sent to me, I'm not in charge here, I'm just doing this now because I see that something was being wronged. But, you know, again, the same people didn't get a letter. I couldn't understand what, I asked Cecilia, what list do you use? We have a map here, we've had the same map, it's lined, whatever's inside gets a letter, should get a letter.
It's really bizarre.
But when I asked Cecilia, she said, "Well, I collect all the names of the people that went to all the meetings, and those people get letters." So, there are people that never went to meetings, and so they don't get a letter. Every, I said to her, "Where's the list of the people in the Superfund site? There's got to be a list." And she says, "Oh, I'm going to have to ask Conti for that." So, that was the answer. So, this second time, when I had to say, "Hey, where's the letters?", there was a whole thing that went on before, and it never should have happened a second time.
When did this been the first time around, Deborah? That was two last meetings?
Well, I think Lorenzo, we're not here to argue about the letters. I do try to, not that we try to, the town does post all the letters on our website for all the residents to see in case some misfortune-like, you don't receive the letter, happen. Unfortunately, I'm sorry you didn't receive the letter, but we do try to post it on our website, and so you can see when the meetings will be. Yes, sir?
My name is Ed Blank, I'll try to be as brief as possible.
Yes, Mr. Blank.
I'm in the Hopewell North Water District, and three of the councilmen were kind enough to come and talk to me about the situation, and you were kind enough to talk to me on the phone about it. The crux of the matter is that generally, drinking Hudson River water is a loathsome idea. That's pretty much agreed to. Besides the science, the whole idea of drinking that water is not what we bargained for when we talked about the Cannon property. So, my question is, do we have to drink the Hudson water? Can we not delay the hookups until the Cannon property is ready? That's really, really where the core of the matter. Can we not delay the hookups until Cannon is ready?
Well, I don't think so. Now, there are two ways that this is going to, we were discussing today with the engineer, and we had a call with the EPA yesterday. Scott, can you explain how the process is, is a two-step process?
Well, it's a two-step process, as I understand. First, they're going to come and do the directional drill, in some cases, open cut, from the curb stop to the foundation and penetrate through the foundation. That'll be one activity, okay, one operation that's going to come through, and that's going to start, I think, Lorenzo?
November.
In November, right? And they like to do that methodically, it's bigger equipment, you know?
Those are the individual pipes that come down across the property?
Right.
Across the property. So, that's one operation, and I like to, I believe, try to do that methodically, okay, from one street to the next street. The second part of it is to actually install the water meters, which is a little less, you know, you don't have the big equipment that you do with the pipe installation, and I think that's a little easier for them to be a little more flexible in that schedule to, you know, bounce around those crews a little bit more, it doesn't have to be quite as methodical as installing the pipelines. So, I mean, I think to some extent, listen, somebody might be on vacation, somebody might be ill, somebody might have family in from out of town, there's a lot of reasons why a person may want to adjust, you know, when they get their meter, and I think they're going to be, try to accommodate that. And if a particular reason might be, you don't want that water, and maybe they try to accommodate you for that as well.
Right, we will try to accommodate as many as we can. If the first step process to actual dig the lines to the homes is a few-month process, and then the next step would be to put the water meters in, when you actually get the meters, then we could think about scheduling and try to take everybody's into consideration, those who don't want the water, those who are snowbirds, who aren't here, whatever the reason, just as the engineer said, to try to get you to the point where whether we're on the Cannon wellfields or the county water, either way, but we will try to make accommodations for everybody. I can't guarantee, we can't guarantee anything like that, but we will try.
Is it, is what I'm hearing that it's really impossible for the contractor to suspend operations until that Cannon property is ready?
We'd have to let the EPA speak to that, I think.
Yeah, I don't think that's possible.
It's most unlikely. We have, as supervisor said, we have this construction fully funded, and the big impact, if we say like, we have to wait till like March, April to hook up all like three hundred plus homes, that would have significant unimaginable cost impacts on our schedule. That would result in having to get more funding, which at this point is quite unlikely. So, we do not want to get into that situation, especially following up and seconding what supervisor just said. In EPA's opinion, the Hopewell Glen water is completely safe, it meets all the safe-drinking water standards, no different from any other water systems. They're quarterly monitors and sends reports to you guys to document how they are meeting all drinking water standards. And if you look at the last year's annual water quality report for Central Duchess Water Transmission Line, Hopewell Glen Water System, Poughkeepsie Treatment Facility, and also the Poughkeepsie City and Poughkeepsie Township, they met all federal drinking water standards. So, we have no concern whatsoever on the quality of the water that we'll be getting, purchasing from Hopewell Glen Water District for just a few months.
Timing is everything in life. An article this morning's paper about Ulster in Duchess County suing the EPA about their inadequate cleanup of the Hudson River. You've read this article?
No, not yet.
I'd be happy to show it to you. Everything in life is timing. All right, the only thing I can say is, then, the ninety-nine percent surety that Mr. Franco gave us was about just for those handful of people that have expressed their opinion that they wanted delay. That's what you meant when you said that. Okay, I just wanted to say that. All right, it's a gamble, all right? Thank you very much, he's hot.
I can Google it. I have the name of the paper?
Yeah, Poughkeepsie Journal, yeah. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Another question that came about, now, I'm going to do my best to try to pronounce some of these chemicals, but the following chemicals from the Hudson River, the bromodichloromethane, chloroform, four bromofluobenzene, I believe, I did a little research on that myself today, and if you could explain a little bit how this is all a byproduct of the chlorination system that's going on with that?
Yeah, those are all disinfection byproducts. Are those from recent results?
Well, that's all, those are things that are tested all the time, those different chemicals, and that I believe, like, as you were saying, it's a byproduct that needed to kill all the harmful organisms.
Okay, yeah, we're talking about two disinfection processes, right, chlorination and then chlorination. As you all know, Poughkeepsie used to use chloramines or chlorination disinfection process that was ceased in two thousand twelve, and they went to chlorination, traditional chlorination disinfection. It's been that disinfection since two thousand twelve. And both chlorination and chlorination, as part of the disinfection processes, both produce what's called the disinfection byproducts. All those are what be called trihalomethanes.
Right.
And then, but, the difference between chlorination and chlorination is that chlorination has been known to produce less disinfection byproducts. That's why many, many years ago, EPA started looking at chlorination disinfection because of concern over the number of disinfection byproducts being produced. So, they started looking into chlorination, and chlorination started becoming quite popular among many municipalities. Today, about one out of five people in this country is on chlorinated drinking water. The problem with the chlorination is that when you chlorinate public drinking water, you have to increase the, what's called the pipe corrosion inhibitors, because chlorination can make the water a bit more corrosive than chlorination. Otherwise, you know, that could result in like leaching of these pipes for like lead and things like that. I don't know what exactly happened like two thousand nine, two thousand ten, but I know at that time, Poughkeepsie did have some lead issue, which they no longer have. So, that's the difference between chlorination and chlorination with respect to disinfection byproducts. You're going to have them regardless, you know? And, but, that's the, a little bit of price you have to pay for drinking completely disinfected water, you know?
I think the concern was, there was a little misunderstanding that perhaps that these chemicals were added, but this is...
No, no, they're all disinfection byproducts. As supervisor just articulated, that eighteen million dollar investment they just made, Poughkeepsie in two thousand sixteen, the ozone biological filtration and much larger centrifuges, they have effectively reduced the number of disinfection byproducts.
How many people are currently on that system?
I mean, I did some like quick research, the Central Duchess Water Transmission Line, that's the Hopewell Glen, and the Global Foundry, that's IBM, we're looking at about forty-five hundred people on it. And then, I don't know the number for the township of Poughkeepsie and city of Poughkeepsie, I actually left a message for Travis, yeah, please, thank you.
Okay, the city-town combined system is somewhere around seventy-five thousand people, depends on whether you count students coming into the colleges or not, but it's that kind of a ballpark. I'd also like to clarify that, yes, we add chlorine to disinfect the water, keep it sanitary, and that does react with other organic compounds, and the plant was redesigned to cut back on that. As far as why, why they stopped using the chloramines, it was, you know, the lead was not really a problem, it was a concern, but there weren't any tests that showed the lead was a problem. The bigger problem was pipe corrosion and problems with valves that the, and maintenance that the chlorine was, the chloramines were causing. The other big problem was the chloramines didn't quite do enough disinfection, and there was some bacteria problems in the city, and they needed to combat those. So, it wasn't a problem with lead or other contaminants in the water, it was more of a maintenance issue.
Right.
Yeah, chlorine is definitely a lot more reactive than chloramines in treating water.
You know, they had some bacteria problems, those were not directly related to the chloramines, but it meant extra maintenance to prevent those. So, it was more of a potential, just like the lead was a potential, but the water, you know, they had to do the maintenance, and they kept the water safe. So, you know, these reasons are potentials that were dealt with, just like the DBP issue was dealt with by the expenditure of the eighteen million dollars. The centrifuges, by the way, don't treat the water, they treat the residuals. So, after they remove contaminants from the water, then they have to get rid of them, and it's much cheaper to centrifuge them and landfill them than it is to try and get rid of the liquid waste.
I don't know which one of you want to try this one, but...
He's doing well.
Yeah. According to DEC report, the Hudson River has been contaminated with sewage overflows more than any other river in the state, and more than two billion gallons released in one year. How can this be healthy, and what is being done to keep this out of our water?
Well, there's a multi-pronged strategy for that. You know, the Hudson was, you know, a poster child for water problems back in the seventies when Clearwater and some other organizations, including the EPA, started cleanup efforts. The water quality has improved immensely. On the other side is the water treatment plant. The water treatment plant, you know, Poughkeepsie's been drinking river water for over a hundred years, and their plant has progressed with, you know, they were first in the nation in filtration, you know, they were very early with disinfection because there were significant health problems back in the eighteenth and nineteenth centuries, and the plant has been continually upgraded to deal with all known problems. So, you know, the announcement of the sewage spills recently, those spills didn't start recently, those spills have been going on, you know, for a long time. Mostly, they're due to the way sewers used to be put in. You'd have a sewer that was for storm water and, you know, domestic sewage, a combined sewer, and it just went to the river. When they put in the sewer treatment plants, they started separating out the sewers, so the sewer treatment plant wouldn't treat storm water. It's very expensive to treat storm water, it's not as polluted as domestic sewage. So, Poughkeepsie has been gradually getting rid of all of their combined sewers, so, you know, the amount of sewage going into the Hudson from Poughkeepsie has been decreasing over time. It's just that it was recently announced when there were overflows. Those weren't new overflows, they aren't a new thing, and the plant has been coping with them for as long as the plant's been there, because the sewage has been there as long, and the plant's just been improved. You know, the bacteriological quality of the water in Poughkeepsie has been very good for very long. You know, the sewage is really a non-issue for the plant, it's designed to fully treat the Hudson River.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. That, what he said about that amount of sewage, that's a recent article, so, that's how much like last year went into the Hudson River, all that sewage. So, I understand that it's gotten better, but that's a more recent, that was written by Dan Shapley, so...
Yeah, I'm not disputing that a lot of sewage goes into the Hudson River.
Okay.
It's the biggest river in the state.
I have another question.
I haven't seen all the numbers that he's quoting, but it is true that there's still sewage going into the river.
Well, he's pretty good like that.
Yeah.
I would trust what he wrote.
That's, sewage does go into the river, that it's treated, and that it's being reduced. Even now, the city of Beacon and the city of Poughkeepsie are still, have active programs to reduce the amount of sewage that overflows accidentally or through, when it shouldn't, you know, through storm events that overflow some of their sewers.
I have another question. I'm going to compare this to Little Switzerland water, because I'm more, I have more knowledge about that water because we were supposed to maybe get it, and then that fell through. None of these chemicals here, except for maybe one or two, are in that water. This has byproducts, twelve byproducts in the water, and for there to be such a difference in the quality, you know, all these, I don't know if any studies have been done, but if you combine all these chemicals and put them all together, because that's really what's happening, they're all combining with themselves, and then you put it on somebody that, with an autoimmune disease like myself because of the TCE water, and skin problems and things like that, has there been any studies about any of these byproducts with dermatitis, psoriasis, or anything like that, that you can assure me that it's not going to make me worse with all that chlorine and stuff?
I'm not personally familiar with any studies that compare general disinfection byproducts to psoriasis or dermatitis.
Well, that, you know, that's one of my concerns, because my health has been compromised as it is. The DEC had let us down back in ninety-four when they could have done something, and I just, I feel I need to ask, not just for myself, but for other people, that this water is not going to make my condition any worse, because I'm going through hell right now. I'm even seeing a holistic doctor and paying for it myself, because regular medicine is not doing it for me. So, I need to know that this water is not going to further hurt me even a little bit, because I don't want it to, I, you know?
So, oh, do you want to?
Yeah, no, we don't do the research, we just make sure that the water, regulate the water systems to make sure they meet current standards.
So, you don't know?
But it doesn't mean that nothing's been done, and we can probably... But it doesn't mean that nothing's been done, and we can probably give you a number to call.
Oh, I know for sure that the numbers went down. Oh, I know for sure, because I looked at what I had for two thousand ten to now. Oh, the numbers went down, but there's still twelve chemicals in there that we could hardly pronounce, and the co-mingling of them all, I'm, it makes me a bit afraid. You know, when I, when I am in Poughkeepsie and I get the water, it smells like a swimming pool, you know, and it, and it tastes like it too. So I always ask, is the water filtered? I'm very aware of my water now. Um, I, I just need to know that, but you can't tell me. So I really don't want this water.
Uh, Deborah, what I can do is maybe when I go back to the office tomorrow, I can have my toxicologist give you a call. I, I'm not-
From the ATSDR?
No, from EPA.
Okay.
Chuck Nays, whom you know, whom you have met.
Chuck Nays?
He's good, he's very knowledgeable. So, you know, I can have him call you to answer any question you have. As Deborah said, you know, I'm just here to tell you that we have strict standards under the Safe Drinking Water Act.
I understand that, but everything is by itself.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they meant for all this stuff to be together.
But the ones you are concerned with, I believe, are disinfection byproducts, right? Like dry uramethanes. Chuck would have knowledge on that.
Right, I mean, there's, there's toluene in here, toluene.
Or toluene?
Yeah, D8.
Oh, dear. Anyway, I'll have them-
It's not good. Not good for me.
And Mrs. Hall, if I could, just quickly, because I, I did a little research on why, um, your question about Little Switzerland, why it's different, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Little Switzerland's on a well, that's well-
Rock wells, yes.
Right. So they don't use as much chlorine that the-
That's my point.
And that's why, that's why you're gonna have the difference.
But they don't have any really byproducts.
Well, again, and that's, it's a much closer system to-
And again, this is why we went through the whole rigmarole of finding our own water source.
I know, I know, but I fought against-
She didn't fight for it, she fought for it.
Well, what were, what were we doing? Nothing?
The town, the town, the town, I'm very thankful for what the town has done. I am very thankful. I am very lucky to live here, okay? That's the way I feel. I just wanna make sure that right towards the very end, right when we're just gonna get that water, that something isn't done to hurt me.
On your side.
That's all I care about. Okay? Any questions?
Lorenzo.
I was just gonna take notes from the meeting.
You, uh, you and the town engineer said that, I think the question was now fully answered. So the hookup is done, but if certain people in the community don't want their water and rather wait for the town water, can that be possible?
That's not my call. It all comes down to how many people we are talking about, but what we don't wanna see is to get to the point where, you know, Conti is gonna have to demobilize, they have nothing to do for months to come, and then cost soaring.
Then it derails a project.
Yeah. Especially that, you know, we don't feel, we don't have any concerns for the quality of the water that we'll be purchasing only for a few months. I mean, it meets all the drinking water standards. If we did have any concern, you know, I would not be saying what I've been saying. So it all comes down to that number.
Lorenzo, sorry, uh, could you just explain that this project was phased in, in three steps, right?
Yeah.
And you just recently received the funding for the, for the final step, right? Just, just recently, you got, you got funded for the final step?
Yes, uh, I think that's been, like, dispersed already, I think, or about to be.
About to be.
Yeah, for phase three.
So I, I think maybe it's important for the public to understand that even though, you know, the perception was the project's been funded, it wasn't entirely funded. They, they started with the, with the main line going up eighty-two, right? And then another funding source came along to do the branch feeds, and I think the final one was the actual connection. So at any point, the funding could've stopped, uh, and I think everyone's fortunate that the funding didn't stop, and I think your point is you don't wanna jeopardize that-
Correct.
-that money gets rerouted.
Right.
And you're this close, I think, as, you know, Mrs. Hall said, and, and the project doesn't get completed, you know?
And also, I think, I think I can say this, uh, concern I expressed a little while ago, that this project is pretty much fully funded, meaning that we're not gonna get any more, you know? And that's our biggest concern, and we spent years designing. Now we are into last few months of completing the construction. Last thing we want is, uh, having Conti to, uh, remobilize or stay around for like four or five more months, for which we would definitely need significantly more funds, which, at this time, I can say that, oh, we've been told, you know, what we've gotten is it, you know? So that's what we are really keeping in mind. Especially, you know, we have no concern for the water, only for temporary basis.
Ms. Over.
Can you help department answer Matt's question and speak to him, because we'd like to know if the cocktail of chemicals is gonna affect somebody who was living because of immunosuppressant medication, someone who takes immunosuppressant medication three times a day. Are those chemicals gonna interact? Go ahead, Matt.
That's, that's Ann, right? Ann, over?
Yes.
This is Matthew.
I'm just gonna take notes, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm back at over. I referred Hopewell Glen.
So the, uh, toxicology that the drinking water standards are based on, you know, they're trying to protect, you know, a, you know, a vulnerable citizen, but they, they're not able to check every possible disease or disorder or condition that a person might have. So if you have something that's very specific, uh, we normally recommend that you, you have your doctor check. In this case, you know, we can ask the State Department of Health if they have any studies or knowledge of this particular question, and Lorenzo has mentioned that EPA has a person who's more knowledgeable in the, the studies that would give you some real answers.
What was your name, sir?
Matthew. Matthew? Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Foster.
My issue has been the lack of communication, and this has been a very long and frustrating process. And I feel as though, I don't want the water either, but if I'm one of the lucky ones to have that granted, it doesn't seem fair to the other residents, because they don't know about it. I've run into neighbors and I've said, have you heard? No, I haven't heard that. I think everybody should be able to know what is happening, and that is not happening. And I think that that's a situation where the EPA has to send out a letter and have a meeting. This has been, there have been a lot of missteps in this process. We hit a bump in the road, and Lorenzo, you could tell me when the Cannon water was found. Do you remember the date?
Oh, two thousand, oh, when I got a call from former supervisor Higman, it was like two thousand ten, two thousand eleven.
Maybe, maybe twelve. I think, I think it was like twelve.
Twelve, that's when you were about to start the hydrogeological.
Yeah.
Two thousand twelve, you purchased it, but all the experimental studies and earlier, a little bit earlier.
Well, according, according to the person who dug our well.
Yeah, yeah.
He said, I don't know what, why they're waiting, why they're looking for Beekman water, why they're trying to buy expensive Beekman water. I've been telling them for years, there's water in the Cannon fields. So when I hear that from Mr. Boyd, then I start to, to mistrust the process, and I think it's just so important to have everybody on the same page. And I have an autoimmune disease too, that I, that I manage quite well, but I don't, I, when I go into Poughkeepsie as well, I feel as though I'm drinking Clorox. And why is that? Because there's a lot of bacteria in there that they have to counteract. So, but for me, the communication is so key for all the residents, and it just, I didn't get the letter either, and my neighbor didn't get the letter, and it wasn't a postcard we misplaced, with all due respect. I've always been fond of you, you know, but twice it happened, and, thank you.
Yeah, I hear you. We're gonna improve on that.
I'll be quick. Susan Blank, I also live in Hopewell Junction. I, I read this article this morning. According to this, there are still about two-thirds of the PCBs that remain in the Hudson. Is this filtering system something that filters out PCBs?
The, uh, Poughkeepsie plant is well aware of the PCB problem in the Hudson. They do test for PCBs, they haven't found any, so, you know, there's very, very little in the water that comes into the plant, because the PCBs tend to stick in the mud, they're not that soluble. So we get very little, if any, coming into the plant, and the plant has none coming out, and that's been tested numerous times.
Okay.
So the PCBs are not a big problem for Poughkeepsie. You know, the, uh, the article that was circulated earlier, you know, I think Poughkeepsie and, uh, pardon, excuse me, Duchess and Ulster are just trying to make sure that this can't become a problem in the, in the future, you know? Once again, they're trying to be proactive about keeping the water clean, rather than having to react to a contamination problem.
But that filtering system would filter them out, or not?
Well, certainly reasonable quantities of them, you know, we, we certainly aren't going to test it with a large amount.
Right.
But, yes, there's, it would certainly remove most of them, and for the, for what's expected, I would expect it to remove all of them. And it, it's been doing so, you know, the, the PCBs are not new.
No, I know that.
And the testing for PCBs is not new.
How often do they test?
Uh, I believe it's every eighteen months for the PCBs.
Oh, eighteen months. That's a long time, isn't it?
It's a long time, and they've, but over the course of decades, you end up with a lot of tests, and if they were to be, um, detected, you, you know, we would certainly look into it, and whenever there is even a ripple of maybe there's a detection, you know, the plant goes and does extra tests to make sure that everything's okay.
Okay. I still don't want Hudson River water.
Evening, my name is Thomas McAdo. I have, uh, two questions. One, we discussed cost, you said before, because if Conti's put on hold and whatnot, it's gonna cost X amount of money, but isn't it gonna cost us money to hook up to this other water source? I mean, there's not a valve right there you're gonna turn on and we're gonna have it all of a sudden. You gotta run some pipe, you gotta do something.
You mean for the interim water?
Yes.
No, that's all part of the construction that we are putting in place.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm, I'm weighing cost against cost, and I'm also-
There actually, there is no additional cost.
There actually is a valve.
Yeah, there is a valve, and there is no additional pipe cost.
Right there, valve, okay.
No, we had to build it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So cost was incurred, cost was incurred to do this alternate system, and you're saying costs are gonna be incurred to delay, but-
Yeah.
My other question as far as the delay is, I mean, Conti can do X amount of work, what about in the middle of December when it's freezing? They're gonna be doing work?
Yeah, they plan to be, yeah.
They're gonna bust through and everything and do it when it's like ten degrees outside and four feet of snow? Okay, I'm mistaken. Um, that's the only thing I was thinking about, but also, I have a question as far as the hydrants. Um, I'm on Hamilton Drive, and I think that's a pretty long road, and I only have three hydrants on that block. Is there any proximity thing you guys came up with to determine how many hydrants are supposed to be on X amount of space, or in the distance from the houses, or, you know, because obviously with homeowners' insurance, the closer you are to a hydrant, the supposedly lower your-
Whole system is fire-rated, correct? So-
So it's all within some certain limits, guidelines and insurances, I'm sure.
Is it every two hundred feet, Scott?
That, I couldn't tell you what that does to you. I don't know.
I have Darrell-
Not on my block.
Was it?
I've heard of that number.
Yeah, I thought, every two hundred. That's what I heard from our design engineer last week.
I think Hamilton Road's a little longer than six hundred feet, 'cause my driveway alone is three hundred feet, and Hamilton Road's a little longer than double. But, okay, thank you.
Another concern was, um, in the future, will the, uh, the Hudson River water be co-mingled with the Cannon water?
In the future, our, our plans are that only on an emergency basis would we access Duchess County water line.
Okay, so when the oil, our oil fields, when the, when the water fields are open, it's just gonna be exclusive, just for water?
That's right. If we had a break or something where we needed emergency water, or there was a huge fire and we needed to, to have more flow of water, then that's when we would utilize that.
Hi, Betsy Gaudio. My question is, once we're put on the temporary system, what guarantee do we have that we're not gonna come off of it?
You're guaranteed, because the town has to get paid back from the EPA for all the money we're spending on this, these wells, okay? I, we just had a conversation the other day with the EPA about when will the town get its share of the money back, and, uh, that's a big concern for the town. We have a, a huge financial responsibility here.
Okay.
If not, it can put us in a precarious financial situation. So my, I have to make sure that we're going to be compensated back for the money we spent.
In addition, I'd just like to add that, uh, kinda on a, on a technical note, uh, we don't actually have a specific contract with the county to purchase water for Hopewell North. We're using a provision in the existing contract for Hopewell Glen that allows a temporary taking, okay? So it's, as far as they're concerned, it's temporary, as far as the Health Department's concerned, it's temporary, 'cause otherwise they'd want us to have a specific contract as we do for Hopewell Glen. So if that adds any more assurance, we, we did not enter an agreement for Hopewell North, it's just under this temporary taking provision that we're taking water.
Okay. Okay. My second question is the curbside hookup. When they go up my property to hook to my house, from that, are they gonna do with, like-
The question is where the stake is, is directly in line with my house, but if they run it from that stake straight to my house, they're gonna go through my leach field, and I don't know if they're allowed to run the pipes-
They should be meeting with each and every homeowner and discussing the route they're gonna take. I believe that's taken-
I'm sure that you have gotten calls from Conti, right?
No.
No.
What's your address?
Twenty-one Hamilton Drive.
Uh, Darrell, take it.
Just for clarity, the, uh, the Health Department requires ten feet from the septic system to all pressurized service line.
Okay.
Straight line is the shortest thing, but they can't do it.
Oh, it's, yeah, I won't worry about that.
We have a similar problem with drainage, and we wanted to pave our driveway, so knowing that we were having the work done on the pipes, we brought in three or four different companies to discuss paving the driveway and dealing with drainage, and the last guy came in, and actually all three of them told us that because of where, because it can't go through our leach field, the water pipe has to go through where the drainage would be, and we needed to coordinate the pipe with the drainage, because if they put the pipe in before the drainage, then when the guy goes through the drainage, it's gonna damage the pipe and vice versa. And yet, my husband has gone down, literally late to work, gone down to meet with the guy, and the guy basically said, yeah, my name is Chip Byce, I'll call you when I get a chance. It's been a week. You know, and this is a lack of communication too. I mean, we're trying to resolve an issue, and he's basically, yeah, whatever, because if you put the pipe in, when I go to do my driveway and the drainage, the pipe's gonna get damaged. Or if I put the drainage in before you do the pipe, the drain, 'cause right now, the pipe has to go through a drainage field that's full of pickle barrels.
Darrell, she's one twenty-four cream rate.
That's your head.
Yes.
I'm not a resident in the affected area, but, um, I am a concerned citizen of this town, and on the issue regarding mailings, everybody has a parcel ID, everybody has recently received a tax notification, the water district is going to be taxed, and I don't know why there's any discrepancy in anybody being in receipt of a mailing.
We agree?
Yeah, we agree.
So, uh, so I don't know why these people aren't in receipt of appropriate mailings and notifications.
Yeah, like I said, I hear you, loud and clearly, and it's something that we have to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Um, now, in regards to, um, the water coming from the Hudson River, I believe the EPA was involved in a similar, um, situation- I believe the EPA was involved in a similar situation up off of nine G. And I'm not certain if it's considered a town of Hyde Park. But there was contamination after the EPA did that job. And I believe it was similar to what Hopewell Glen experienced. Are you familiar with that?
No, did you say nine?
Nine G.
Nine G, no, I'm sorry.
I believe you're referring to the Green Bush Water District.
Correct. That is correct. Okay? And what my question regarding that is the similarities or differences between what happened in Hopewell Glen and what happened there? Because for many years, the town of Poughkeepsie and the city of Poughkeepsie didn't experience these bacterial problems. And so, is it a piping issue? The type of pipe that was used to extend to the area off of nine G? And what has been extended to Hopewell Glen? Is it a piping issue or is it a difference in chemicals being used?
All those issues were resolved with the filtration fix that they did up at the facility in Poughkeepsie. So, whether or not it was pipe or it was the amount of growth in the Hudson at a certain time of the year, it's been fixed.
Well, if it was resolved there, why did it occur at a later date here?
I think the problem that you're referring to is related to the disinfection byproducts.
Yes.
Both Green Bush and Hopewell Glen are small districts.
But I don't think they happened concurrent. I think Hopewell Glen happened in the aftermath.
I don't remember the exact dates, but.
It was all prior to the filtration plant.
Green Bush has had ongoing issues. These gentlemen are correct that the new filtration plant has improved the situation a lot.
What was the similarity? That's the bottom line. What was the similarity?
The similarity is that they're both small districts that are attached to large systems. In the case of Green Bush, they're connected to the town of Poughkeepsie. In the case of Hopewell Glen, they're connected to the Central Duchess Water Transmission Line, which is a big pipe. I think, you know, when you have these small districts, they don't have as much water flow. Sometimes the pipes don't get flushed out enough. I know that the town of East Fishkill, when they discovered the problem, was very proactive. They got their operators involved and basically, as Mr. DeLisandro says, they solved the problem.
I accept your explanation that East Fishkill was proactive, but why, after it happened, they were proactive? But if it was resolved and acknowledged as an existing situation in Green Bush, why was there a recurrence here in East Fishkill?
You know, every system is operated with a lot of different concerns. You know, you don't want to excessively flush because that disturbs things. I'm not personally familiar with exactly what they were doing up in Green Bush, but I know they did have problems. And I know they've had operation, you know, different operational ideas up there. But each system is a little different as far as where the piping is and where the valving is and who's operating it. You know, the numbers that I've seen have indicated that Hopewell Glen has reasonably effectively dealt with the problem of water age where they have a small system that's not completely built out and large pipes that are based on the complete district, you know. So, you know, they had to do some extra work operating the system to make sure that it operates properly on the initial.
Sounds like the Health Department may have been not on top of keeping score or tabs on the why. And these people that are going to be the recipients of a temporary situation are concerned with a forever lasting result.
If I could just add though, for Hopewell Glen, as Lee mentioned in the beginning, when you had just a handful of homes, it was difficult to keep the water fresh. So, we started a flushing program, very aggressive flushing program. Since that time, two things have happened. We've had more homes built or connected and the filter system has gone in at the county to the point where we stopped flushing, you know, well over a year or more ago that we stopped flushing. And our numbers are, I think, down in the thirties right now and the limit is eighty and we were well above eighty for a while there. Now, we're already looking ahead to Hopewell North. We know we're going to have to do a very active flushing program because first there's going to be five homes and then ten homes and fifteen homes. We have a three hundred thousand gallon tank. But we'd have to do that flushing whether we're getting the water from the Cannon Well Field, from Poughkeepsie or wherever we're getting that water from. We're going to have to be on top of it and operate it, as Lee said, accordingly. And, you know, don't be surprised when you see hydrants with dissipators, you know, shooting water off. We're already talking where we're going to route this water so we don't create, you know, erosion problems. But this is all part of operations.
So, are you saying, Scott, then, that the system will be flushed after the utilization of the Hudson River water? It'll be significantly flushed.
We would have to flush if we were taking the water from the Cannon Well Field initially, we'd have to flush.
Including the storage tank? The storage tank is going to be depleted?
Well, we have to turn that over, you know. We can't just sit there forever. We have to turn that over.
And what about the services? The services to the home? If they get turned on, you're going to put a spike on it?
Well, the idea is if a service is on or when they put the meter and they're going to flush for some period of time, I don't know exactly what the period of time is, but they will certainly flush that before they go live, yes. Anytime you have a large system and you start connecting one house at a time, it's an operation concern that we have to be on top of. And we know we're going to have to waste water to do that. And in fact, to that end, I might just add that our contract with the EPA says that for the first year, they bear the cost of operations because we know there's going to be, you know, excessive, you know, water usage more than what just the homeowners are using to keep the water fresh, so.
Okay, thanks. I have another question regarding the district that does not involve the EPA. I don't know if I should wait for that question in the aftermath or if you want me to address it now.
If it's not with this project.
It has to do with the project, but not. The question is the hardware of the hydrants. Is the town bearing that burden of cost? Or is the EPA absorbing that? Is the district absorbing that?
The EPA is paying for the whole initial.
Including the hydrant?
Including the hydrants.
That answers my question.
Then, once it's turned over to us, it's our responsibility.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I just want everybody to keep in mind that New York State has one of the most stringent water standards in the country. We're part of the ten state standards. Can you explain ten state standards so everybody understands what that is, Scott? Maybe you or.
I want to defer to the Health Department, please.
The ten state standards is a design book about how to build, how to design a water treatment system, you know, from the source all the way to, you know, the service lines. Yeah, New York helped develop that. You know, the New York State Health Department Chief Engineer is an active participant in that. In addition to the ten state standards, you know, New York's water supply regulations predated the federal regulations, you know, and are still more stringent than some of the federal regulations, especially as concerns maximum contaminant levels for contaminants. So, you know, if, and if you're just generally in the U.S., the water might not be as clean. Of course, for the most part, the federal standards and the state standards are very similar.
Good evening. I don't know if I should get up and say what I was thinking, but I couldn't just sit there without leaving here without saying what I was feeling and thinking. I'm also not in the water district that these people have been affected by. But, you know, until the next incident or episode happens, I think that's what everybody's concerned about. Nobody wants to wait until it's just a handful of people or whatever the case. And I, by no means mean any disrespect to the people that are here, you know, educated on the subject, but I'm pretty much of a skeptic. And I think that people really lose faith in, you know, your credentials or whatever. I want to believe everything that you're saying and I believe that you believe everything that you're saying. But the problem comes in when the next incident happens. So, I really don't know the remedy for all of this. But I'm wondering, I see a lot of people drinking bottled water. I buy bottled water. I'm wondering if the government should give us a rebate and it's not going to help people that have skin issues. But, and I'm serious in what I say, maybe we should get some money so we can buy bottled water because I got well watered that I can't really drink because it's salty. Let me buy my bottled water. And that might solve some of the problem for some people. And I think it might be something to think about because I think people don't really trust anything as far as what they're drinking. And I think most people, whether they get their systems in place, are still going to drink bottled water. I don't think that we should have to bear that burden. I spend a lot of money on bottled water. I think we should be reimbursed. Thank you.
Actually, I've had this bottled for about two weeks. This is Tep water from home. And when I run out of it, I usually go to the water fountain here. I really do.
He filled it, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Culver, one-two-four Creamery. I just have one question, Lorenzo. If the money has already been allocated, why would we have to pay more money if we wait for the Cannon Field? Like, instead of getting the Hudson River now, why would we have to incur more cost for the EPA? If the money's already been there to do this whole system?
Because what I meant to say with the money has been funded to get to like projected completion date, March, April, while Conti is all fully mobilized. If they run out of work, they would have to demobilize, which has happened, like, one or two days. They had to like, you know, send part of their crew back. But if it's going to happen on a large scale, when we get nowhere with this final service connection phase, that would have a huge cost impact on our overall construction project. That was the point that I was trying to make.
Okay.
You know, because we have like, right now, if you go by on Route eighty-two, I forget the name of that lumber place, that entrance, Briway.
Williams Lumber.
We have a, you know, pretty nice office trailer setup accommodating Conti Construction Crew and Army Call. And all that, you know, adds up a lot on a daily basis. And you're seeing a lot of work taking place on various neighborhoods, right? Within Hopewell Junction. And if we have to like demob all those people for like a few weeks and then they come back, that's going to have a significant cost impact. You know? And we want to avoid all that, you know, we worked so hard. Especially Deborah, you remember, we started this together in two thousand and four, two thousand and five. Site was listed on the NPL, you know, in two thousand and five, May. And then because of Deborah, you know, we got to like where we are today.
Yes.
You know?
Okay, did we have any other, did you have any other questions, councilman?
I think we have them all.
Any other council members? Any other comments? Anybody else in the audience wish to speak?
I just have one question about that ten foot rule.
Yeah, come right up.
Okay. What is that? What is the ten foot?
The ten foot rule is when you have a sewage system, you know, leach field, septic system, some sewage is leaking into the ground. When you have a water line, you know, either a pressurized line from your well or a pressurized line from the main in the street, there's supposed to be ten feet horizontally. I'm not that big, but ten feet between them. Because if there were a leak in that line, you don't want it right in the middle of the sewage. And you don't, if there were a leak, you don't want the sewage system flooded out either.
I don't think that's the case in ours, so.
Well, it's not supposed to be that there's a leak in the line and.
No, but I don't think, I think it's very close, so that's something I need to look into. Yeah, thank you.
Has it been installed already?
Yes.
You're saying, you know, the service line hasn't been installed, I don't think.
No? Okay, there's a blue hose. That's not what you.
Well, it's a curb stop right to your property line.
Piece of metal sticking through the ground?
Thing of concern that hasn't been, hasn't been installed?
Not from the curb stop to the house? I don't believe they haven't started that yet, right?
I don't know. No, I don't think so.
The service line to your house, that hasn't been installed?
They should be contacting you and coordinating that and asking those questions and finding out where your septic is and other obstructions.
I thought that blue hose, you know, that was what you were talking about.
That's just the valve for your property. By the road. That's the way they're going to get to your property.
I assume that was what you were going to.
They'll connect that, they'll connect that line to your house.
Yeah, I don't think there's ten feet, but.
Nancy, just a quick question. I know Conti, the construction contractor that reports to U.S. Army Call, they've been doing a pretty good diligent work in contacting homeowners.
Oh, yeah.
Setting up appointment.
He called me today.
And then he's going to go over this work order that he's going to ask you to sign off on, telling you exactly how the connection is going to be made.
That's already happened.
Happened, okay.
He did come.
He did come, okay.
Yes.
And you signed off on the work order?
I don't, maybe my husband did, but it all seems kind of close to me.
Does it should show on there to separation?
Yeah, but he called me today. He's wonderful.
The Andy Weber, yeah, he's really good.
Yes, yes, so.
Oh, yeah, he's the person who was calling you while I was on the phone with you.
So, and I can give you his number, too. Yeah.
Nancy, you could call him again to verify, so.
I will.
Yeah, they have a hotline. If they don't pick it up, they call you right back.
Yeah, he said within one day he did.
Yeah, yeah.
Called, he did. So, okay, thank you.
I just have a question about the leach fields. I know where mine is. My house is old enough and the house next to it is old enough that, you know, before a lot of the town codes became really strict, my neighbor's property literally comes up to within about a foot of my property. And at one point, her leach fields were actually right behind this addition on her house, which is basically where my pipe is going to go for the water. Is there any way we can look into? Because I understand she may have moved her system. But can we check into that? Is that something I can bring up? One-two-four Creamery Road and what is Judy? But it's the house next to me. Literally, like I said, our homes were.
I'll look at the plot lines tomorrow.
Right, created before a lot of town codes came into being. And I know at one point her leach field was right there where her patio is and it may have been moved, but.
Lots of conversations I had with contractors, they talked about the location of the facility and we'll put respect to the pipe.
I never thought to ask about hers.
So, as long as they held true to what they were talking about, we shouldn't be here. But they probably put the pipe either between the leach fields or they're going to rock someplace else to avoid the leach.
Right, but see, when he came to our house and talked to us, it was actually my brother who spoke with him. And we never thought to mention that where her leach fields had existed at one time, which will literally be where the pipe would be snake between. Okay.
We can actually remove that curb stop and put a different one.
There is nowhere else to go for it. But I would like to know, like, if you guys can legally ask her where her leach fields are to make sure that it doesn't interfere with our water. Okay?
One last quick question regarding the hydrants. You know, I wondered when I passed by the fire hydrants, some of them seem like they're a foot below the grade of the road. And I'm wondering, you know, in a snowstorm, how is anybody going to really access that hydrant? I would think that the hydrant should be, you know, up high. And I don't know that a flag would do it to show, designate where it is. I mean, how would somebody get to those hydrants to open up, to tap into it for water? I've been wondering about that ever since I seen them. They looked like they were about that low.
I think all that is in the past, right, Daryl? Maybe they've been constructed?
We do have a known ongoing punch list of hydrants that need to be raised or lowered, but they match the geography within that area. So, wherever they put the hydrant, it's going to match the level of it, it's going to be at that height.
But if they need to be raised or lowered?
They make extensions. They have to.
Yeah.
They have to take the red part off, put the extension on.
Why wouldn't that be there now? I don't understand why.
Because I have a subcontractor to a subcontractor and that subcontractor does a couple of parts all the time.
That's ridiculous. Because they were, I mean, we're not, no, no, don't wave your hand. I just.
Bobby, Bobby, it's not live yet. Before the town accepts it, before that goes live, that all has to be done. Those are dead hydrants right now.
None of these hydrants are live?
No.
No. No, nothing.
My, my, my.
They will all be, Bob, they'll all be fixed.
Or we don't accept it.
Are they banked or marked?
In fact, uh, we, we had a call this morning, we talked about having a walk-through in the next month or two with town.
Yeah, yeah, they know it's dead.
To go over the work that we had done.
Yeah.
For the, uh, where the water mains are being installed.
It snows tomorrow, it's gonna be a snow, they plowed the street. Now that hydrant's gonna be partially covered, so is maintenance from the town gonna come out and shovel it out?
That's a, that's a new issue that was brought up to us, was a snowy thing. And, uh, so we have a couple hydrants that are within, we have a couple hydrants that are within the snow season for the city that we already moved.
Okay.
And Bobby, just to add to that, too, if you're worried about the fire department not finding the hydrants, every apparatus has an iPad in there, and all the hydrants and dry hydrants are mapped out. So they can always find it.
I really had a, I really had a concern of the hydrant being so low that they wouldn't be able to access the.
Right. You're talking about the cleaning end of it, I'm just saying they'll be able to find it.
You get ice, the, the clouds, where's the ice spread out to?
I think Eagle showed it.
And before the, and before the town accepts the, accepts the, um, district from the EPA, we have, the engineer's got a long laundry list to make sure everything is covered, and you know how the, our engineer is, so.
She's starting.
And on the top is the check, so. Anybody else has any questions for, uh, our guests here, please, or the town board? Now, okay. Uh, thank you very much, um, Mr. Thantoo, Mr. Felsham, Ms. Brulee, thank you very much for coming. Really appreciate it. Uh, if anybody has any questions, please call my office, 221-4303. Uh, email me, uh, call one of the council persons. Uh, you know how to reach us, so please do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, supervisor.
Pleasure to be here.
Thanks so much.
Do you have any questions? You know how to get hold of us?
How are you, Lee?
Hi.
I dealt with him twenty years ago. I, I knew him when he was young.
Thank you.
He's the one that did my house.
But, when I was driving down here, I was thinking, geez, Ben Nordland isn't building inspector anymore.
Thank you.
And then when I finally tested my water?
Okay.
Again, I seen you. When I finally tested my water, you accused me of bottling it.
Hi, sweetie.
Because I'm next to who's known contaminant, a hundred years ago.
Likewise.
Okay, council, uh, councilman, thank you. Yeah. Next on our agenda, we have, um, Annette Cars, Ms. Annette Cars from Hope Not Handcuffs. Um, and our police chief, Matt Orsino, is going to.
I gotta get my zip dropped now.
Have a little, we're gonna have a little discussion with them about Hope Not Handcuffs.
Where that thing is to be checked.
Good evening, thanks for coming out. Ms. Cars, how are you?
Good, I feel like we cleared the room.
Yes.
The room is cleared. They don't even wanna know where my hometown is.
Where is your hometown?
Flint, Michigan.
Wow.
I could talk to you all night about water and communities, so.
You know all about it.
Very much so, very much so.
You met your former mayor last year at the White House.
Yes, we did.
What's that?
You met your former mayor at the White House last year.
Oh, really?
She brought up her water issue, your water issue.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Um, uh, my family all still lives in Michigan, and my, um, one of my brothers is actually involved in the class action lawsuit with the water, and, uh, yeah, it's crazy there. I mean, it's really devastated, um, our, our, our town where I was raised, so. You have to be, you can't be too careful, you know?
Absolutely.
And I appreciated, um, the one gentleman's comment who said, you know, he believes that they believe, you know, that they're, you know, sometimes you have to be extra careful, you guys all do, so.
Yes, if you liked his comments, you could come to our every town board meeting.
Yeah, here.
Uh, no, that's okay.
It usually talks.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna pass around, I brought you guys, I think I have enough for everyone, but each little packet is, uh, separated with this card, okay? So there's three or four pieces of, uh, material in there. Basically, um, I'm just gonna keep this one, um, piece for myself to read off of, and then I'll leave it with you guys. And, um, you know, I, I can sort of read through this really quickly, and then you guys can just ask whatever questions, or how would you, or do you just wanna?
Yeah, give us a little brief description about your organization and, um, how, uh, you, you think we can help you.
Okay, so, um, I can jump all over the place, or I'll keep it streamlined. So let me just go through what I'm gonna give to you guys, which is sort of like a one cheater, um, that I just actually read from, uh, last Thursday. I had the opportunity to testify in front of a, a New York Senate Task Force on opioids and, uh, uh, prevention, overdose prevention, which was, not that you guys aren't intimidating, but that was pretty intimidating, ten senators. Um, but they're working hard in New York State to try to resolve this issue. So, this was, uh, part of what I was reading to them, but. So, Hope Not Handcuffs Hudson Valley is a program of the Tri-County Community Partnership. Um, it's aimed at bringing law enforcement and community organizations together in an effort to find viable treatment options for individuals to reduce dependency with heroin, prescription drugs, and alcohol. This program is a collaborative effort between local police departments and community angel volunteers to find treatment options for those seeking assistance for addiction. So the background is that Hope Not Handcuffs model is a PARI model. PARI stands for Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. Started out of Gloucester, Massachusetts. Started out of, uh, near Detroit, Michigan, which I said before, I'm from Michigan, so I knew of the program out there. Um, it was started by a circuit court judge, and in less than two years, it really rapidly grew to expand to over eighty police departments, um, in nine counties, and they have over eight hundred community volunteer angels. Um, they just recently received a three million dollar grant, and they are statewide now in every state sheriff and municipal, uh, police department in the state. So, um, in less than two and a half years, they have put over thirty-three hundred people into treatment through, uh, meeting them at, uh, police departments through this pre-arrest diversion program. So that's a little background on this particular PARI model. There's over five hundred PARI models in the country. This is just the largest and most effective, um, program. Um, so, how it works is pretty simple. Any person seeking assistance for their substance use can just walk into any of our participating police departments and ask for help. The person is met with dignity and respect, and angel is dispatched to the location and immediately works to find a treatment option. It's that simple. Um, so, a little background on where we are. So in January, we started this program in the town of Walk Hill, over in Orange County. Um, in less than nine months of this year, we have grown to twenty-one police departments. Um, we have over six hundred and fifty volunteer angels. Um, our, our, our twenty-one police departments are in four counties, which are Orange, Dutchess, Rockland, and, uh, Putnam. And, um, we have, um, seven, about seven additional, uh, police departments that are, uh, seeking to have the program everywhere, from Westchester onto Albany. Um, we have the program rights to be able to use in eleven counties in the Hudson Valley. Um, this also, with all the police departments incorporates about eight hundred and fifty-six police officers. Um, we took a little while to get it started. Um, it needed some community exposure and that level of community trust with the police. And we've put around fifty-five, a little over fifty-five people into treatment so far. It's rapidly, uh, uh, the momentum is, is really grown recently. As a matter of fact, we've put, uh, eight people into treatment in the last, uh, less than three weeks alone. Just the, the phone calls are coming pretty much daily. Um, so, a hundred percent of the people who have come into our, uh, police departments have been placed successfully. Um, so we've had very good luck with that. Part of that has to do with the fact that, um, my, uh, partner and I, we have been, uh, this summer, we took, um, we were very, very conscious about the infrastructure of this program and making sure we had good relationships. So we met with different, uh, treatment facilities around the area. We personally toured them, we went through focus groups, we met with the administrators and some of the clients, and we, uh, developed relationships with some of the treatment facilities, making it easier and more streamlined when the angels come in to make the placements. Um, so, um, one, uh, two kinda cool things that have happened is, um, we were recognized by the Rockefeller Institute, um, as one of four organizations in the state that are doing innovative work and, uh, addressing the opioid crisis. So we went and participated in a panel in Albany, and there was a, uh, video and photo exhibit, and it was, it was pretty interesting, and, uh, an honor to be, uh, selected in that way. And then, uh, recently, we consented to work with the University of Albany School of Public Health. They are currently, uh, studying and, um, looking at the efficacy of these programs in New York State because pre-arrest diversion deflection is a, is sort of a newer concept in the last, uh, five years. So they're measuring the efficacy of it. So we're, um, being tracked for our data right now. So, I've also included in the packet our participating police departments that we're working with now. Um, you would see that you are actually kind of a, uh, coming soon, uh, on there, hopefully. And, um, just a couple of our marketing materials. We have, um, some billboards, and we have, uh, small cards that we give to the police departments with their badge and their locations on it, so that when they're, um, out in the field and they were, they're working with someone, um, and they know when to use their discretion to, you know, let them know that the program exists. Um, pretty much, uh, I'm gonna say, all but three cases have been just self-referral. So I'll just give you a little background. Uh, in the last three weeks, uh, the eight people that I was telling you about, uh, seven of them were male, one female, all in their mid twenties, all white, all insured, and all with their parents. None of them had a criminal history, they just walked in with their parents, looking for help. That's essentially what this program is. We're sort of a service. I mean, it is a law enforcement program. There is the option for law enforcement to deflect in a situation. Um, there was a situation yesterday with the town of Goshen. Uh, there was a young man that they were, um, familiar with. He was a, a kid in the county, uh, in the community that they knew. Uh, he had a, uh, a petty charge. Uh, he was arrested. Um, they had approached the judge about getting him treatment through this program. They called us in, we went in, we made a placement. He was arraigned, the judge was lenient, he went home with his parents, and then went to treatment this morning. He will deal with his charges on the back end, but they wanted him to be sober, to be aware, to be healthy, and then he would do that. So, um, that is, only happened a few times, but that is another form of deflection that can be done, but for the most part, it's self-referral. So I'm gonna let you ask me what you need to ask about, about the program.
That sounds all great. It's, why wouldn't we participate? Chief, have you spoken to any other departments that take part in this?
Yeah, I've, I've spoken to Montgomery, uh, in particular about it. Actually, when they came with the presentation, um, we, we, we spoke that, at length about it. I mean, I, I feel, what this does is offer, offer an opportunity to our community and really to surrounding communities in Dutchess with the opioid epidemic that we're having, to avoid the arrest. As, as Annette was saying, come in with your family. Let's get the, you know? And, again, I think as it stands now, without the program, we would do what we could do to help. But, having this program with us in, in a partnership allows us to access, you know, maybe they can make a call to someone that knows where a bed is, and we can get somebody in. So, you know, I, I think, um, especially with the amount of overdoses and everything that we've had in Dutchess, um, you know, I know we're, our police department does what it can do to, to, you know, combat this problem. Um, but this is a way for people to get it without, hopefully, avoiding the arrest. And, and, you know, um, all our officers are crisis intervention trained. I think that's where, um, some of this came up. And then one of the officers, um, Officer Malaney, uh, took the initiative to contact Annette and her, and reach out and, and get the program instituted, and we've met. And I think, um, there hasn't been any issues in any of the other departments that I've spoken to. So, um, you know, obviously, things happen. There could be little wrinkles that we gotta work out at times, but all in all, this is another program that we can offer the community. Um, you know, at two in the morning, they can come to the police department and say, "We need help." We can partner, work together, and get them the help they need.
That's great.
I think it sounds awesome. Anything to help combat this scourge, because my understanding, too, is, um, like you said, the description of who you're helping, we're losing a generation of men. We really are. What, was it one? And women.
And women.
But, one a week, my understanding, funerals for overdoses. And he's fish kill alone. One a week.
Yeah, and, and we have, you know, listen, we've, we've helped, you know, the sixty-two-year-old man who's a veteran, and then we've helped, you know, the pregnant young woman who... So we've had a, a large gamut of, of, of types of, of people. Um, but in the end, when they, when they utilize this program, what we're seeing is, they're just tired. You know, the parents are tired, they just, they don't, you know, especially like, over in Orange County, we have an abundance of services over there, but nobody seems to know how to access it. But everybody knows where the police department is. So, um, that, it's been very, it's shown to be very successful. I will also tell you, as far as resources from the police department, if anything, it's less because the time that it takes for them to sit and assist somebody into treatment or take them to the hospital and have to sit them with, sit with them, that's what the angels do. The angels actually will stay with the participant. They don't drive the participant to treatment, we utilize other services to do that. Um, but it is actually more cost-effective for the police. It's also, um, it's also, you know, effective for community trust. Um, it also will help to reduce crime, uh, in the long run. So, uh, we do train the angels a lot on pre-arrest diversion and what exactly it can do for communities. Um, you should also know that we do background checks on our angels. Um, we do confidentiality, uh, training and HIPAA training. Um, so, uh, I think it's, ends up working out very nicely because you have all these people who wanna help. I mean, we've had six hundred and fifty people sign up to become an angel in nine months' time. And it's incredible. I mean, that's, that just speaks to the level of the people who've been affected, and they just wanna help. They just wanna help. I mean, look at these, look at these nice ladies back here, you know? These are just some of what, uh, we have so many people like that, and dads, too. Um, and, they just volunteer for one six-hour shift a month to be on call, just to be on call. And, um, you know, they, they can have no training, or they can, a lot of them, they come in, they're, they're, they're teachers, they're social workers, they're nurses, you know, whatever it might be, they're trained, but their professional training is, for this, they're just making phone calls, and they're being compassionate. So, it's a simple program.
So, our, um, how, uh, is the network, um, in the local community right now working out? And the other question I have, how are the courts accepting what you're proposing to do? Is it on a one-to-one basis, or is it a collective? Uh, the judges, how receptive are in using your services?
I mean, so far, we, like I said, we've had very few where we've actually had to do that type of deflection. I think coming January first, we may see some different changes with bail reform. We'll have to see what, what, I know the law enforcement that I speak with, they're very concerned. Um, hope, we, we don't know how that will affect us, but the judge in particular last night was very receptive to it. He had heard of us, Hope Not Handcuffs, and, um, that's, again, post-arrest, but, um, for the most part, this is pre-arrest, but they seem to be very receptive to it. Um, so far, over in, or, uh, Dutchess County here, you have about a hundred angels, I think, trained, um, in this area. So you're already, you know, trained up and ready to go. Um, and we asked that the angels be at the police department within twenty to thirty minutes. So all the angels that are already trained for Wappingers can, you know, you know, make it here, and then I think we maybe might have had an inquiry from Beacon as well, I'm not sure on that. But Putnam is launching, uh, Kent, Carmel, and the Sheriff's Department on the twenty-fourth of this month. They're doing it countywide, so.
Excellent.
So Chief, I know a lot of our officers go to many, if not all, of the overdoses that happen within our town. Will they be giving these out to the families?
Um, you know, they, that's a.
Or is it strictly a walk-in?
I, I think that's generally what it's set up for. I think if they feel that it's warranted, they could do it. A lot of times when you're dealing with somebody that's just been involved in an overdose, the idea is, if they've been Narcan-ed back to life or whatever, is to get them some type of immediate medical assistance.
Right, that's to the hospital, but what, like, any sort of follow-up or anything to just let them know the services are available?
So we have cards that we're gonna give to them that are small business cards. So they can carry them in their cars and in their wallets and whatever have you. So, hopefully, we would, we tell law enforcement, "We would love you to use those cards in those situations." So I'm not sure if you even knew that we would be giving you those small cards.
Well, you gave them on the, when we had our meeting.
Yeah, I didn't bring any with me, I apologize, but they're just like little, small ones 'cause those are kind of big and, they can-
But it's certainly no problem for the officers to make a referral, right?
And then Officer Farrell here is with, I don't need to put you on the spot, but with Wappingers. So I don't know if you, you know, she's currently working the program over in Wappingers. So if you had any questions for her, about how the program's working and-
I was just gonna interject for one second. So to answer your question about the little, like, business cards. I carry them in my patrol car with me. I go to an overdose and I'll leave it on the dresser. Or I'll leave it in the purse with the female as she's being sent to the hospital. Because the next day, they're gonna see that card and it might trigger them, you know, "Maybe I do need to get some treatment." And I can go to the police department and get some treatment. And it's like that silent advertising for the program. And it also gives them, like, the trigger that, "You know, maybe I do need help" if someone has never reached out before. I leave it at the gas station when I'm getting gas, right at the pumps. I've put them before. And I give them out all the time. Unfortunately, I don't have any of mine with me. I was just thinking about it, like, I don't have them with me. But our program in Wappingers is working pretty seamlessly, for the most part. We just placed a person on Tuesday. I wasn't, unfortunately, I wasn't a part of the placement, but a couple of the angels behind me were. And within an hour, they were in and out of the police department and in.
And that's interesting that she, because, so the angels are trained to do this, no matter where they go. Whatever door they walk through, it's the same process in our training, the same protocol, okay? So we can sometimes have Putnam angels who might be able to come here, you know, because they're all trained to do the exact same thing. But if an officer is available to be with us, it just builds that much more, the community trust. If they're not, then that's okay, we can still do the process and they're trained to do the process. If an officer's too busy, or, I mean, certainly, if there's an emergency that were to come up in any way, shape, or form, they're trained. You know, we're in the police department. So if there's any emergency, if there's anything where they feel uncomfortable, if there's, you know, somebody looks sick, you know, they know to, we're at the police department, know what better place. And one last thing, interesting about, you were talking about this card. This is how the program works because the angels are the ambassadors of the program. And we give them these cards and these flyers and we say, you know, "Just put them out. Put them in the community." Of course, ask the business owner if you're gonna put them in a gas station or whatever. But one night in the town of Walkill, we actually had a brother and a sister come in together. Twenty-seven, thirty years old, looking for treatment. Their cousins brought them in. And I asked them, I said, "How did you guys find out about us?" And they said, "Somebody had taped this to a gas pump." So, I mean, it's kind of organic, you know, the way that it, it kind of spreads around, so. Not to oversell you on it, I could tell you stories all night, but it's, it's really, really great. We've seen great things happen from it, so.
Now, how do you become an angel, if you wanted to? What do you contact?
So you, you just go on our website, which is the tricountycommunitypartnership.org, and there's a little button on there that says, "How to Become an Angel," and then you just fill out the form. And we are doing our next training for, and you can go to any training in any county, if, you know, if you're not available for one county. Our next training is in Goshen on the twenty-eighth, but we just did one here. We just did one at your stabilization center a few weeks ago. So we'll, you know, we have them periodically that you can attend, so. And we are a 501(c)(3). We are a charitable organization through the, you know, we have our IRS exemption and we have, we are incorporated, we have a board, we have board insurance and general liability and all that good stuff too, so.
Okay, excellent.
All right.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Do you need another one of these? Does everybody get one?
You can either, we'll put the information out.
I'll leave it right there.
Yes.
You could give us business card. Oh, you don't have any.
I gave my information to the chief, so he has it. The lieutenant has my information as well, because it's how you guys started hearing about the program 'cause I solicited.
Which lieutenant?
Wood.
Wood.
Okay, very good.
He was in the crisis intervention training program with me when we were implementing Hope No Handcuffs here.
Look at that.
This is like what a couple of the small business cards look like. These, these are what we put out that are just sort of generic. They have our toll-free number on the front, and then they have, like, you know, a little information on the back. But his cards would look like this in the front, but it would have their police badge, East Fishkill Police Badge, and location. And then these make their way around in the community, so I'll just leave a couple of those.
Thank you.
All right?
Hey, thank you so much, Ms. Fries.
She's got a whole box of stuff. She's got a whole box of stuff. Business cards.
Excellent. Okay, thank you for, thank you, you'll be, we'll be in touch. So next on our agenda is our budget discussion. So the town clerk had delivered the proposed town budget to the town board at our last board meeting on September twenty-sixth. I'm happy to say my administration has prepared a quality budget for the town board to review. They've been reviewing it. And for all the residents of East Fishkill, thank you to our comptroller, Mark Pozniak, for all his assistance. He is excellent. The budget does not exceed, well, I'll get into that. The budget does not exceed the New York State imposed tax cap. I focus on items that our town board and residents, of course, prefer to keep as top priorities. Paving, our police department, recreational services, all things that our residents keep very high on their lists of why they love our town. This year, there is a referendum on our ballot, as you, most people know. We've been discussing this for many months. It is to place a capital reserve fund for paving on, for our, for the town. No town board could ever access those funds for anything else other than paving and drainage. Those dollars are untouchable for anything else, and that's the reasons why we put it to a vote of the people, so that they would vote to keep those dollars always in that fund for that reason. When you curtail the powers of the town board, which is the powers of the purse, that can only be done by public referendum, only the people have the authority to do that, and that would take the power away from us to use that money for anything else. That would trigger the exceedance of the tax cap if that, if that referendum is passed. But the rest of the budget is under the tax cap, the operational budget. The only trigger is the referendum for the paving. Is, we're asking for a $1.3 million. That is approximately ninety-seven dollars per average house home in East Fishkill. Everybody knows that our town board also is committed to clean water and expansion of our water districts and sewer districts. And because mainly it is all tied to economic development. This is constantly on our minds. This is why we started our Economic Development Committee. Councilman Marinara and I sit on that. We need more businesses to come to our town, and we need water and sewer infrastructure in order for them to come here. It's a necessity for the businesses to have that. So that's why we really push water and sewer projects all over the town. Those dollars that the districts borrow remain in those districts, are paid for the people that live in those districts. But those dollars borrowed are also go against our tax cap. That's correct, comptroller?
That's right.
So it's fair to say that the New York State imposed tax cap kind of limits, limits a municipality's overall growth. Because if we need to expand water and sewer districts or buy new water and sewer districts, we, obviously, we need to borrow for that because the town doesn't have tens of millions of dollars reserved just for that. That borrowing is against our tax cap. So it is a difficult juggling act to keep us under the tax cap. We're constantly looking for ways to cut. The town comptroller is gonna give us just a slight, brief presentation tonight. We will be doing our full presentation at our public hearing for the budget on November seventh. And the reason why we're having it on November seventh is that is right after the election, and we will know the results of the referendum. So with that, with the comptroller, go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, so there's a, as the supervisor said, a brief presentation regarding the 2020 budget. Looking back over our spending trends over the past seven or eight years, the blue line represents the general fund spending. You can see that it's largely flat with a little bit of an uptick at the end. We are able to keep spending flat for many, many years despite increases in a variety of expenses. We are always able to find reductions in expenses to offset those increases. We're sort of running to the end of that, and you start to see a small increase in our spending trends. That's for the general fund, and similar for the highway. Largely flat for many years, but starting a slow uptick. This is probably hard for people to see, but it's available on the website and at the town clerk's office. It shows a summary of all the different funds we have, all the different lighting districts, water districts, sewer districts, the total amount we're proposing to spend in 2020, the revenues that we'll receive, and the property taxes that we would raise in those districts, and the associated property tax rates. The budget as presented conforms to the property tax cap. So this, these numbers here don't include the potential 1.3 million in extra property taxes and paving funding. In two thousand, a $325,000 house in 2019 would have paid $1,061 in town taxes. That same house would, you know, the assessed value would change, but the increase would be approximately $29 to $1,090 in 2020. So on, on average, property owners would pay an additional 2.73% more in town taxes in 2020 than they did in 2019, as currently proposed. To contrast that with what the budget would look like, were we to, or were the people to vote on the capital reserve? This just shows those same numbers adjusted for that 1.3 million. And, this is the same concept. Instead of that increase that you saw two slides ago, the, if we were to pass the, if the people were to vote for the capital reserve, the typical town, typical, average home would increase from $1,061 to $1,195 in property taxes. Doing so would reduce our paving timeline from every ninety-some-odd years, ninety to ninety-five years, to roughly every thirty years, all the roads in town would be paved. Okay? This is showing what the rates would be in East Fishkill as compared to neighboring towns that have comparable services. I use 2019 rates because we don't have the 2020 rates for all these other municipalities yet. The East Fishkill tax rate would be the lowest of the neighboring towns with a tax rate of 3.27. If we added 1.3 million to that, it would still be the lowest by a significant amount. Just a quick pie chart to show, of all the property taxes you pay, approximately 75% go to school. About 11% go to the, percent of what you pay goes to the county, 10% to the town, and the rest to the fire district and library. So the property tax rate will decrease by 2.53% from that 3.27 we showed to 3.18. Tax cap will not be exceeded. Again, this is assuming the budget as exists without the additional 1.3 million. If the voters approve the highway paving referendum, we'd add them 1.3, as stated before. We have no plan in the current budget reduction in services. And just a comment that we've brought up for the past several years. The minimum wage is, is increasing by 70 cents per year until it hits $15 several years from now. Okay, and that's all I had for tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Like the comptroller said, even with, if the voters do vote yes on the paving referendum, which will give us an additional $1.3 million for paving, our tax rate still will be far lowest than all the comparable towns in Dutchess and Putnam and in our whole area. So I, you know, that's a real feather in our cap for the town board. We work hard to make sure that our tax rate is low. It's, it's difficult for some families to make ends meet, and we understand that. And unfortunately, we have costs that go up, just like homeowners have costs, and that's why we try to cut wherever we can to, so we can offset those costs. But it is, the town is like a business and we do, we do try to run it that way. The board has had the budget for the past week, two weeks, two weeks. Any comments, any questions, any? Open it up to you guys.
I'll start quickly. Mark, you and I were discussing earlier about what the biggest challenges are. And personnel costs, they represent 75 to 80% of the entire budget, and that's four to 5% every year. And what's the tax cap at now?
2.95%.
So clearly, that math just doesn't add up.
Right.
So that's something we have to get our, we have to wrap our arms around in the future.
And I just wanted to make a comment before you continue. Are the tax cap this year, is that 2.95, correct, Mark?
Right.
So everybody says there's a 2% tax cap. There is, there is parts in that equation that give us an addition for growth in our town.
Yeah, so the percentage is based on the total levy, not on an individual homeowner's. We're able to collect more than 2% because we have new properties that are paying taxes, so that 0.95% is taxes on either new properties or existing properties that have added additions.
Right, so I just want to explain to everybody that even though it is a 2% tax cap, that 2.95 is below the mandated cap limit. So I'm sorry, Councilman.
No, that's, that's fine. Of that four to 5% growth every year in personnel costs, can you go over some of the things that we cannot control?
Yes, so, you know, we don't have any control over health insurance premiums. We don't have any control over the contribution we make to the New York State Pension Program. Those are the probably two biggest items that are almost entirely outside of our control.
Right.
We do have a limited ability to control those through negotiations and things. In terms of, we can't control the premium, but we can attempt to change contribution rates to the premium, things like that.
Yeah, we were just discussing that contribution rates for retirees. And actually, the town retirees, police, town hall, highway department, whoever's retired in the town, just their healthcare benefits alone cost us $900,000 a year.
Right, and with the tax cap limiting us, there become, there heads a point where, you know, we have to make some tough decisions. So it's, it's not sustainable, clearly.
Well, every year, every year, we have close to double-digit increases with all our expenses, and we have the 2% tax cap. So we're cutting the budget every year so we're under that gap. It's just, it's just like at home. You get, you have a certain amount coming in, you have your mortgage and your food bills, and if you don't have enough to pay for your food bill, you have to cut somewhere else. That's-
Or else you don't eat.
Or we don't eat.
Couple days.
Exactly.
And the fund balance, where we stand with that, and are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, no, so fund balance is reasonably healthy. It's $2.5 million, and it's been growing every year for the past four years.
Last year, we grew over $400,000.
Yeah, almost $500,000. I think we're in the range of ideal. We may be at the low end of ideal, but we're, we're in a comfortable spot.
And that's supposed to cover, like, about, what, three to four months of bills or so?
Yeah, it, it serves two functions. One, to, to pay our expenses early in the year before we've received our, most of our revenues. Property taxes are the biggest revenue, and we tend to get that February more. Also for unexpected events. Unexpected event could be a disaster that, that costs us money, or it could be revenues that don't come in as projected. So fund balance helps to, to cover any gap that gets created.
And Councilman, yeah, but personnel is a huge, you know, situation, I should say, so.
Well, 75 to 80% of the budget, that's-
Is, is personnel cost. So we, we have discussed, you know, through attrition, possibly not filling some positions, and that's just a matter of fact, that, that's life. We, we, we can't sustain our, our numbers, so we, we're going to have to reduce somewhere.
Okay, but thanks for all the work you guys both have done.
So Mark, as far as the, the fund balance, should be between 10 and 50% of the total available funds, correct? We're pretty much there now.
Yeah, I think our policy is 15 to 25%. 10 was a number, 10 to 15 was the state used to.
Correct.
I, I think that's low, and, and so our, this town's goal is 15 to 25% of annual appropriations.
And just my two cents, as far as costs that we, we do not have a grip on, which is pensions and healthcare cost. Unfortunately, like the town supervisor said, when some of those measures were put in place, they didn't really, and nobody could tell where we're going to be another 10 years from now. So that's really, it's a tough call to make. But being in the situation that we're in now, I think, since the town supervisor said that we have to run the town business as a, as a private business, really, I think that we're at a point where we're gonna start really making some smart decisions and project in a different directions than where we've been going year to year. And, you know, in the past, we have, we have put measures because our hands are tied as far as prevailing wages. You know, if we gotta do work, and we wanna do work, but sometimes these prevailing wages that the state has in place really inflate the figures when we really gotta go out and contract it out. I, I remember last year, the town engineer presented that, you know, probably going to the private, is it, it is an alternative that probably, you know, in order to save costs and don't increase taxes, because at the end of the day, those are the choices. So we're really gonna start making really smart and hard decisions and find a way to really make sure that we take care of services. But definitely, I will not vote for raising taxes. So it has kind of time where the challenges are there, and I know that we speak about this stuff in private, but I am happy to say that the town supervisor brought to the attention of the community that the business of the town has to be run as a private, and the private sometimes do make.
Tough decisions.
Tough decision, a smart decision to get off the hook and still deliver those services. So probably, I'm happy to hear that, you know, raising taxes is probably not going to be on the table from now on. At least, I'm not in favor of that choice.
And councilman, to your point, yeah, and I'm thankful for our town employees, they're willing to help and work. Just an example, our town assessor's office used to have three full-time persons in there, and one left to go somewhere else. We didn't replace that person. The tax receivers office used to have two full-time people, the one left, and we only have a seasonal in there with the one full-timer. And I started a pilot program just this past tax collection, so thank you to the assessors and tax receivers office. The assessors were helping out with the tax receivers office during the busy time this last few weeks. It worked out great since we did our renovation here. I placed offices next to each other that I knew would help each other during their, their downtime, I should say, and it's been working out well. But I, it, it goes to show you that our employees do care about the community and want to try to help and share services and work harder. Unfortunately, we all have to work a little harder for the same amount of money, but that's, that's what we have to do.
It's no different than any other business when, you know, you're working on another project and teams get reassigned all the time.
Right.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, our tack, our share of sales tax revenue came in a little bit higher than we projected for.
For 2018.
2018.
Yes.
So that slight excess amount or, or higher amount, does that go towards the fund balance, or does that?
Right, so what, the way fund balance works is you take all of your revenues from the year, and you subtract out all of your expenditures from the year, and if it's a positive number, fund balance goes up, and if it's a negative number, fund balance goes down. Yeah. So we had a $500,000 operating surplus last year. And a good chunk of that surplus was due to unexpected revenues. The rest was due to cost containment, you know, coming in under budget where we could, and that's what created the operating surplus.
Thank you.
Well, I did a good job keeping control of it again, as usual. And hopefully, that fund balance grows, and we can slap a little bit of that, maybe a blacktop or something in another year or so, we get a surplus.
Yeah, we need to grow our highway fund balance. That's a little weak, I should say. But, you know, it's very difficult when we're trying to utilize every dollar for paving and what have you. This town board knows, we've been dealing with the paving issue for, we're at the, really at the brunt of it. So if we, it'll take a little longer to build a highway fund balance, it's gonna have to take a little longer, but we need to utilize those funds for our roads.
So a question just for the town supervisor and the comptroller. Is it advisable to maybe look into if there is companies out there that could kind of come and give us an advice from time to time? Maybe, let's say, every six months or once a year, sit with us and tell us how to go forward and contain costs without, without challenging the taxes? Is that something that we might want to entertain in the future? In other words?
They, they cost, they cost money. If, if we could save more.
It's funny that we say it like that, but, you know, at the end of the day, if we have a seminar with, and we invite a person, even if we gotta spend $1,000 for that day, which I think it's way too much, and offer them lunch.
Right.
I think it's a benefit to us.
Sure. If you can spend $10,000 to save $100,000, it's worth it. Understood. And just as an example of something like that, the town board, maybe six months ago, authorized a company to do an audit of our utilities, check, take a look at the bills, you know, just that type of thing. That doesn't cost.
That's coming soon, that results.
Yeah, we should be getting the results soon. If there's any savings to be had, it's from those savings that the company would be paid. So there's no risk to, to us. You know, I'm open to anything you guys want to do. We are constantly looking at ways to save money. We talked with the health insurance agent, he's gonna be bringing us back some options. I don't expect any.
We do shop the insurance every few years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my point is that if, people like us sitting at a table, we look at things from the inside. There are people that look at things from the outside, and that probably there's experts out there. It's just like people that they play the stock market every day. Somebody like myself, I have to use their judgment to say how to invest and profit out my money. And I'm pretty sure that there's people out there that could say, okay, I'm looking at what you guys have in place right now. There are ways that maybe you could maximize your profits if we put these, these things in place. And, I mean, I, I was looking for that at the Association of Towns. I didn't see much of that, because that's like more small companies doing presentations.
Yeah, to what Councilman Marinaro is saying, there's a lot of consulting firms out there that does reviews and audits of businesses. You just have to find the one that specializes in the, in the public sector.
Right.
We have far more restrictions than a normal company would.
Councilman Marinaro, I agree with you 100%. I think it's a great idea, and I think what you said earlier, how some things were passed and they weren't looking into the future, and that's exactly what this is. We need, all of us, and I think we do, and I believe most politicians should, we have to look into the future. We need to see around corners. We have to be prepared for our, our residents. So I think it's very, very important. That's what we're supposed to do.
And there are people that do trend analysis, that they do, I mean, Mark, you pretty, I mean, you're very good at this, but there are people out there that they do projections, that they take the bigger picture in place and say, okay, you know, what do you think? If we present this scenario, six years from now, 10 years from now, this is where, where you might be. And again, I, I think we'll probably benefit. I mean, the town supervisor.
Yeah, I'd be willing to look into something, and like you said, we don't know what the future holds.
Correct.
That's why we.
But we're supposed to. That's the unfortunate, I know.
That's why we also put the referendum on the ballot for the people, for the paving. We know for sure that fuel's gonna increase. In 10 years, the cost of fuel's gonna increase, so that means the cost to repair the roads, to blacktop the roads is only gonna increase. So maybe if those nine, every 90 years, our roads are getting repaved right now, maybe it'll go to 120 years. It, it's a trickle-down effect. I, I've talked, I had a meeting with Waperville Central Schools yesterday, and their facilities' director was there talking about how, what a toll the roads are on all the buses. And I says, we just had this discussion with our, I had several times with our police chief, with our fire commissioners, the road, the toll that the roads take on all the equipment. And this is all the taxpayer money. This is your money. Whether we fix the roads now, or we wait, put it off, it's just gonna cost taxpayer money, unfortunately.
Nick, I just wanna caution you on that statement that you just made, because.
That's not correct.
I, I think that probably in 10 years, you might see less cars on the roads. I mean, just by looking.
School buses?
They don't like to drive, they drive less. And even in New York City right now, they have helicopters driven, that they do service from the airport to New York City, that directly avoid the traffic for $200. You could go from Manhattan to JFK.
Yeah, it's super late, anyway.
You're right, but.
You know, we cannot foresee the trends of the future, like Councilman Franco said. I, I think we need to really sit with sometimes with experts.
Yeah, I agree, but I know for a fact.
We all wanna do the right thing. That's, that's the best thing that we could put it.
You're right, and I know, for a fact, though, I know that my tax dollars, I don't wanna see going to fix a $250,000 fire truck that we just bought because we don't wanna, you know, because of the road condition. So there are choices that everybody has to make. Unfortunately, they are hard decisions. It is hard decisions that we have to make here to, to keep the town in a up-to-date fashion, so it's, it's a challenge.
If the town board did this, the exact thing that we're doing now 20 years ago, we wouldn't be in the same situation.
No, we wouldn't.
That's a great statement.
That's why we're trying to do it now.
And that didn't happen 20 years ago. That's why we are, we are where we are today. I say it over and over.
So that's why we do what we do, right, councilman?
Some people, like they said years ago, pass the bucket.
Kick the bucket down the road. Very true. Okay, any other comments? We have one other thing to discuss. We've had a lot of calls about one of the water districts in town. Mark, would you like to discuss that?
Yeah, so in particular, the Four Corners Water District, we've received a number of calls questioning the amount of water that usage shown on their, their bills. So I just very quickly wanted to give a little bit of information. One first thing you should do if you receive your bill and you have any questions is match the number that shows on the bill to the meter that's in your basement. You know, that will give you some confidence that the number that we're showing as your meter reading is your actual meter reading. And if you do this on a somewhat regular basis, you'll have a better grasp of how much water you're using between bills. Also, there may be, if you have high usage, there may be a leak. One simple way to check is to have your washing machine off, have your dishwasher off, no sinks running, and see if the meter's moving. If the meter's moving and you're not expecting any water to be flowing, there may be a leak. You can also test the meter, if you want, by running, checking the meter reading, running a gallon of water into a, a milk jug, turn it off, go check the meter reading, see if it advanced a gallon, assuming, again, all your other apparatus are, are off. Do five gallons, do 10 gallons, whatever would give you comfort that the meter is actually accurately advancing as you're using water. But the truth is that in that district, most of the water usage is from irrigation, and I don't know that everyone understands just how much an irrigation system, how much water uses. I went around the country, and, you know, you see the same thing in Maryland, and, in Mississippi, and Texas, in a variety of places, they all have articles about, be careful. In this particular one, an irrigation system running 15 minutes twice a week with eight heads, will use 15,000 gallons of water a month. 15,000 gallons of water in a, in a quarter, you know, that's 45,000 gallons just for irrigation. That's 15 minutes twice a week.
We have plenty of water to recycle from our, our bleeding that we're gonna have to do.
Yeah. Our water operator drives through Four Corners every day, and he's, he tells me, while it's raining, people have sprinklers on. You know, people aren't always, if you're not aware of how much water's being used, you may not care that your water's running during rain, but you really ought to time it with the actual weather. And he says the roads are covered with water from irrigation sprinklers, that you're spraying twice as much water as you need. And again, things for homeowners to look at. These are just meant to be things for them to take sort of more control over their own water usage. If you do have questions, please do call us. There are occasions where there may be a malfunctioning meter, so we can talk you through how to figure that out. We can look at your history, see what makes sense. So do feel free to call the water department, the number's on the bill. But those were some things everyone can do to sort of get better control over their own water usage.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any comments about that? Any comments? No? Okay, so our next town board meeting is October 24, 2019. And just a reminder, our public hearing for the budget is November 7th, not, the next meeting is November 7th. And with that, thank you all for joining us. Have a good night.